...institutionalize ito para mapwira sa 'yung ating mga LCS na lumaban sa drug problem ng ating bansa, Mister President. So yun po ang naging, ah nakita nating rason.
So Mister President, the good sponsor is saying, "The structure, the present organizational setup is a failure insofar as our anti-drug campaign is concerned."
A failure in some localities.
Sorry?
A failure in some localities.
Yeah, ah Mister President.
Successful in some.
Mister President.
So to, to solve the problem, we just established all of this all over the Philippines, ganun ba?
The, the, the original intention, you know.
That is why sir, that is why sir, I am saying leave it to the LGUs.
The, the, um, the original intention of the bill, if I may, I, I filed a bill to this effect. Um, it is a duplicate of the House version and the DILG version, which is simply institutionalizing the drug abuse councils. Uh, meron kasing problema sa local level, kung minsan 'yung mayor hindi gusto, 'yung vice mayor gusto, you know, um, kakaroon ngayon, kung i-institutionalize mo 'yung mga councils. Um, yun na 'yung sinasabi ni Senator De La Rosa, mapipilitan. Pero doon lang, ganun lang, 'yung, ano, kung 'yung structure ngayon, you know, uh, ikangay, uh, uh, institutionalize it. The problem that I'm seeing now, I, I, I see the difficulty and I, I haven't seen you go there yet, you know, is the expansion. The version of the committee expanded eh. Expanded it eh, to lumawak masyado eh, may pwede pang magdetain eh, mga ano eh, mga, hindi ganun ang intention originally noong Anti-Drug Abuse Councils, which was a very successful program in Quezon City when I started it in 1988. And that is a, that was duplicated by most local government units and as a matter of fact, that was awarded, recognized by the WHO as the model Drug Abuse Council, you know, for Asia. Uh, but again, institutionalizing, kung ano na 'yung meron, pareho na sinasabi niyo kung ano 'yung meron. Eh pero, pero pag-inexpand natin, medyo ibang usapan na, eh.
Precisely Mister President, I would like to associate myself with the views of the Senate President. Citing Quezon City, a very successful, if, uh, drug campaign through the, uh, through the, uh, city, Anti-Drug Abuse Council of Quezon City. You did not need any law to do that sir. You successfully implemented it without the, without the requirement of a national law. You yourself Mister President is leaving, is the one arguing that, yes, we institutionalized, pero wag lahat gagawin mo, ah, because ito, lahat po na probinsya, ah, lahat na lungsod, lahat na barangay, magkakaroon ng, ng Anti-Drug Council and the local government has no choice. And in the bill now, they have to allocate 2% of their, uh, of their resources for the Anti-Drug Council. This is very difficult to accept Mister President and I'm, I regret that I have to stand up here on the last day of our session to, to, to spread into the record why this cannot work. Maybe, uh, if the committee can have a little more time, present this in the next Congress, not on the last 30 minutes of this Congress and examine everything that would, should have to be examined with, with, with the, with the luxury of time and thought. That's our proposition Mister President.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the DILG should have been, should have done this ages ago. In the Dangerous Drug Sack of 2002, of which I am the principal author of Republic of 9165, it's mandated there that there should be a badak, barangay Anti-Drug Abuse Councils. It's incumbent upon the DILG to do that. It's there in the law. Ito ngayon, parang redundancy ito kung tutuusin. But then again, uh, the, I, I think the, the committee deemed it necessary to bring it out. So we leave it to you, the distinguished gentleman.
Ah Mister President, I just would like to clarify that, uh, as far as the 2% that is, uh, stated, uh, in this bill, LGOs are already mandated to appropriate funds for preventive programs and rehabilitation or treatment of the drug dependence under Section 51 of RA 9165. Ngayon Mister President, 'yung ibang LGOs kasi, iniignore po nila ito. Kaya in order to strengthen the provisions of RA, of the, under Section 51 of RA 9165, kaya namin, kaya namin nilagyan ng at least 2%. But if the minority leader object to this, uh, provision, then we are willing to amend this Mister President. We are willing to, uh, to amend.
Mister President, it is not a personal objection. It is not something that, uh, on a personal level I find objectionable. I am raising this issue because it has been decided by the Supreme Court in the case of Pimentel versus Aguirre. Precisely, uh, the national government was, uh, and the national, and the national government was prohibited from allocate, for, from dictating on the local government how to use the resources. Let me read Mister President, uh, the, uh, the pertinent provision or the pertinent portion of the decision by the Supreme Court. It says fiscal autonomy means that local governments have the power to create their own sources of revenue in addition to their equitable share in national taxes released by the national government, as well as the power to allocate resources in accordance with their own priorities. It extends to the preparation of their budgets. Local officials in turn have to work within the constraints thereof. It is, they are not formulated at the national level and imposed on the local governments, whether they are relevant to local needs and resources or not. Very clearly Mister President, the principle here is that the national government should not dictate on how the local governments should allocate the resources. Um, um, the, the, this, the power of the local governments to allocate resources, resources in accordance with their own priorities is recognized by the Supreme Court. To now impose that under Section 4, impose on the LGU, uh, to appro, quote, appropriate at least 2% of the annual appropriations to fund anti-illegal drug-related programs, activities and operations as a mandatory item in their budgets, provided the disbursements of funds shall be made by the LGUs concerned. This is precisely what the Supreme Court found as unconstitutional in the case of Pimentel versus Aguirre, because it runs counter to the concept of the law of, of local autonomy. We have been, uh, we may not agree with the decision of the Supreme Court, but that is the law, that we cannot appropriate resources of the local governments for a specific purpose. So this is why I have really difficulties in, 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 uh, concurring with or casting an affirmative vote on this bill. Uh Mister President, I must admit that I have not conducted a very lengthy study on this. Ngayon ko lang po nakita ito eh. Um, may I reiterate that given the fact that we have barely 30 minutes of our time, that this be refiled in the next Congress and, and discussed there.
Uh Mister President, uh, the, the, the price substantial portion is vague and, uh, subject to varied interpretation. The 2% requirement is minimal compared to the 5% guard provision. The minimum requirement will ensure the efficient and effective implementation of the anti-illegal drug program of the LGO. But nevertheless Mister President, uh, the minority leader, uh, doesn't have to con, 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 concur with us. Instead, we are the ones concoring to his wisdom Mister President and we agree with him that, uh, uh, that is, uh, that can be termed as unconstitutional. So we are willing to, to amend Mister President, we are willing to amend this particular provision. We are willing to remove this Mister President.
How about our appeal that this be returned back to the committee? Uh, to give us, to give the committee more time to review this and the members of this, or the, the, the members of this chamber to be able to analyze it more, uh, in detail. But I am willing to stand here up to the end of the 18th Congress if needed to analyze and debate on this bill.
Uh... What can I do Mister President?
No, it's, it's not, I'm, I'm sorry sir, uh, it is not a whim on our part. This is an important policy decision which would involve this, uh, use of public resources. Uh, this is an important bill, uh, issue of devolution of, of powers, of, of, of government powers. It is not a whim on our part Mister President, it's not that, what can we, it's not that it's, it's made to appear that since I object, uh, I have reservations about this bill, um, it should not be passed. What I'm saying is being rational about this, uh, I don't think any member of this chamber has, has, uh, read this, uh, uh, in much detail because they're just going through a cursory reading, there are a lot of issues that I can raise. The, uh, issue of information gathering, uh, it should serve as information gathering mechanism which will monitor and report to the appropriate authorities illegal drug facilities and activities within the jurisdiction. Abay, pwede na ngayon report si Senator Rekto, hindi nila alam ni Senator Rekto that he's being reported. So these are, these are issues that are so sensitive and would need further, uh, study. And that is why we are suggesting that this be brought back, that this matter be taken up in the next Congress, which is barely two months from now. Hindi naman po siguro malala ang ating problema kung ito po'y pag-uusapan sa susunod na Kongreso. Uh, because we have other, uh, uh, issues in the bill. Yun lang po ang aking hinihig, pero nasa, nasa sponsor po yun, kung talaga sa tingin niya, eh dapat magiging batas ito bukas.
Uh Mister President, I just want to react that this bill was filed, uh, 2021 pa Mister President and, uh, lahat po ng mga dokumento ay naibigay po namin sa opisina lang, lahat ng mga senador and, uh, but, uh, no problem Mister President, uh, we are willing to, uh, withdraw. Uh, if this will end up to nothing despite the, uh, certificate of urgency signed by the President for this, uh, bill, but, uh, no, no problem with us Mister President, we can, uh, we can refile this, uh, in the next Congress.
We thank the gentleman for his open-mindedness insofar as this very sensitive issue is concerned. Uh, we put on, we put on record our admiration for the capacity of the gentleman to accommodate, uh, other views insofar as he is concerned. And we thank the gentleman for accepting our suggestion that this matter be refiled in the 19th Congress and, uh, debated more extensively at that time. Thank you very much, uh, Mister President.
Thank you, uh, thank you sir, uh, minority leader and, uh, I hope, uh, you help me convince the incoming Senate President that I will be still, uh, be holding the, the same committee on public order and dangerous drugs, come the next, uh, Congress so that I can, uh, continue on with this advocacy, Mister President.
Yes, uh, I will take you up on that. Uh, we will convince the next Senate President to retain you as Chairman of the Committee on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs.
Uh Mister President, the next Senate President is not listening, he is on the phone.
Hey, Majority Leader.
Mister President, I just would like to manifest that, uh, on record, that the principal author of this, uh, bill is our Senate President. And, uh, uh, alam na alam po niya lahat ito and, uh, Quezon City, uh, was so lucky to have, uh, Vice Mayor Tito Soto din, uh, kaya very successful ang Quezon City. Kaya gusto naming gawing model sana 'yung Quezon City, uh, all throughout the country. Kaya very excited po kami dito sa bill ito authored by the Senate President. But then again, uh, we are still, we, 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 we can still, uh, wait for the next Congress, for the passage of this, uh, bill Mister President. Provided, provided the powers that be are listening. Sana, uh, and diyan pa rin tayo as a Chairman of the Senate Committee on Public Order and Dangerous Drugs to continue our fight against, uh, criminali, criminality and drugs.
You'll have, uh, you'll have enough time, uh, Your Honor and, uh, of course, um, next time, eh, when you file it in the 19th Congress, you will be the principal author and not the, the Senate President.
And not only that, the next Senate President is listening, uh, to the desire of the good sponsor to head the committee on public order. Uh, so that message is clearly delivered, uh, Mister President.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, minority leaders, and thank you very much for your support.
What do you say Majority Leader?
I'm just the Majority Leader Mister President, I'm not yet the Senate President, but, uh, definitely the expert in the field of public order security, uh, the expert in matters of police affairs, uh, is no other than the former Chief of Police, uh, the very famous outstanding Chief of Police of President Di Gomodoterte, no other than Senator Ronald De La Rosa, Mister President. So I'm working it out. Pinapawisan ako sa lahat ng lugar. So I'm working it out. Thank you very much Mister President. Mister President, um, thank you very much, so dear colleagues, Senator De La Rosa, we can suspend consideration of the measure so we can discuss this lengthly in the next Congress, I'm sure he'll be able to, able to sponsor this once again. I move to suspend considerations.
Any objection, hearing none, consideration suspended.
May I ask for a minute to suspend on this, just one minute, half one minute.
Session suspended.
Yeah, well, Mister President will, uh, skip first the RCEP while we are looking for warm bodies.
Session resumed.
Hindi po ano, hindi po zombie, warm bodies talaga. Uh Mister President, let's go to item number three. This is the Committee Report 645 and the Proposed Resolution Number 522. May we recognize Senator Gachalian.
Senator, Senator Gachalian is recognized.
Mister President, there are no members who wish to interpretate the measure. Move to close the period of interplayation on this committee report.
Big pardon?
We closed the period of interpolations.
Any objection, hearing none, period of interpolations closed.
Uh, there being no amendments as well, we, uh, closed the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, period of amendments closed.
Mister President, move to adopt Committee Report Number 645 and Proposed Resolution Number 522.
Any objection, hearing none, motion is approved, uh, resolution is adopted.
Mister President, I move to the reshoring consideration of Committee Report Number 646.
Any objection, hearing none, consideration is in order.
May we recognize our distinguished colleague Senator Bato De La Rosa for, is he there? May I ask for one minute suspension?
Session suspended.
Hey, reshore Mister President.
Session reshore.
Would you interpolate kay Sabong naman? Sa Isabong, mag-iinterpretate ka pa kay Sabong eh, or adopt na natin?
Yeah, let's do it.
May we recognize to just ask a few clarificatory questions to distinguished gentleman, uh, the future minority leader, uh, Mister President. My dear friend and neighbor again, the owner, Senator Aquilino Coco Pimentel.
Senator Coco Pimentel is recognized.
Thank you Mister President. The, my being minority leader would not be a result of the designation by our present majority leader, but by the election of the minority faction, Mister President. So we'll never know, uh, we have to wait for that, uh, result of that election. So, uh, the, uh, with the permission of the, uh, good sponsor of that, uh, committee report, if I, if I may be allowed to, uh, ask a few clarificatory questions or discuss the report itself.
Yes Mister President.
Uh, uh, at the outset, I'd like to commend actually the Chairman and the committee and staff for, for writing a, uh, well-written report, easy to follow, easy to read and, uh, recommendations are very, very clear. So, uh, I'd like to commend the, uh, whole committee and the people who work with you, uh, Mister, Mister, uh, Mister Chairman.
Thank you Mister President and, uh, I'm just lucky to have a very good legislative staff and, uh, my, uh, comsec, uh, Mister President is very good. So thank you for all the praises that, uh, uh, you have said.
Uh, I'm really worried about the missing Sabongeros because as you've, as you've said in your report, you know, uh, the cash flow into the government coffers will not justify, you know, having lives sacrificed in the name of this, uh, activity. So after this report, uh, what else can we do to so that we can solve that, uh, those heinous crimes? Those are heinous crimes, uh, uh, Mister President, I hope Chairman agrees.
Yes, I agree Mister President and, uh, we will not stop from, uh, from, uh, exercising our, uh, our oversight function over the PNP and the other law enforcement agencies, uh, investigating this, uh, heinous crime Mister President. Uh, itaga mo yan sa to.
So oversight na po sir, uh, so your present committee, uh, will automatically exercise oversight functions over the progress of the recommendations in this report.
Yes Mister President.
So that's why we, that's why we really, we really have to make sure that you remain as the Chairman of the, of that, of this committee.
I hope everyone is listening Mister President.
He is not listening again, Mister President, he's re, another, another reason. Pero, so, uh, just to, 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 uh, to, to fix the facts. So how many, but I, I don't think Sabongeros eh, let's say, let's sabi na nating, how many persons are missing now because of activities linked to, uh, Isabong in this six to eight venues Mister President?
Mister President, uh, in our final committee report, uh, from 34, it was reduced to 32.
32?
Yeah, because, uh, the two missing persons were later on, uh, classified by, uh, the NBI as, uh, not related to Isabong, but, uh, related to drugs Mister President. So 32 missing persons as of now.
And then, but, uh, yes, but your hearing uncovered a sub-issue of still missing persons, two missing persons.
Yes Mister President.
Uh, 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 because of legitimate anti-drug operations.
Yes Mister President.
And they are missing.
They are missing.
Uh, what was the, lives din po ito, I mean, li, possible lives lost din po ito.
Yes Mister President and, uh...
How could that, how could that be, how, how could that happen in the Philippines Mister President? Uh, there is a well-documented or, uh, uh, drug operation leading to the arrest of two people who cannot be accounted for right now.
Uh, we, that is why we will continue our oversight function over, uh, NBI on, on the continua, continue, on the continuation of their investigation on this matter Mister President.
Uh, pero dun sa two missing persons na po yun in that, in that, uh, drug operation, hindi involves the NBI dun, diba? That's, that's, that's a PNP, it's just the NBI which investigated and, and found out that it's a legitimate PNP anti-drug operation.
Yes, that is, that is according to NBI. But later on Mister President, uh, the PNP denied, uh, that it is, it was a legitimate police operation and, uh, the two vital witnesses, uh, that was, uh, uh, the source of information of NBI, uh, retracted their, uh, their statements.
Okay, and so, okay, I, I, I got the, so I, I, I got the misimpression that the report found the operation as a legitimate anti-drug. So it's, that's still, yeah, in dispute, uh, Mister Chairman, Mister, Mister President. Tama po ba yan, hindi, hindi, hindi claro?
Not, not so clear Mister President. Initial five days of NBI was that it was an, it was a legitimate, uh, anti-drug operation. Uh, but later on, it was found out that, uh, the source of the information of NBI, 'yung dalawang vital witness nila ay nag-retract na kanila state, kanila statement na they don't, they, they, they don't know about that operation.
And how about the PNP sir?
The PNP denied.
Denied, ah so, so mali ako, it's not a well-documented anti-drug operation. Wala palang document, ano pala, uh, uh, testimony or word of mouth lang?
Yes Mister President.
Okay, so, okay, so since we do not know, uh, what caused their disappearance, it could still be linked to Isabong?
Possible Mister President eh, yeah, it's possible.
Anyway sir, anyway sir, uh, uh, I, I was present in some of the hearings. Alam ko, chinallenge natin ito, the best, the best, uh, investigators in our land, NBI na, pinagsanipwira sa with PNP CIDG. Yan the challenge, yun na challenge po, narinig ko nun eh.
Yes sir.
The best, sino pa bang, sino pa bang pwede natin itap sa Republic of the Philippines? Walala eh. Uh, ano na po ang, uh, ilang months na po, how, how long have they been working on this? Um, how many man-hours have they spent in the investigation and have there been developments or reports? Kasi ano po sir, eh, i-add na lang muna natin 'yung dalawa, ano, so 32 plus 2, 34 missing persons. Possible 34 dead persons. Uh, in eight, if I'm not mistaken, in eight incidents, uh, Mister Chairman, right? Seven, in, in eight incidents, so parang, so parang eight crimes. Uh, impossible to have in, uh, eight perfect crimes eh. The, the best investigators in the Republic of the Philippines cannot crack solve eight perfect crimes?
Um, Mister President, we, out of the eight, uh, cases, uh, as far as the PNP is concerned, two are already solved because, uh, they have already filed the cases against the suspects Mister President. Two, two cases.
Okay.
Case number six and, uh, case number eight.
And the cases filed are, uh, parang, uh, kidnapping pa lang or, uh, homicide or murder na? Ano na, nan, grave, grave, grave crimes na?
Kidnapping Mister President.
Kidnapping?
And obstruction, uh, of justice.
Okay, na, na, nalungkot lang po ako kasi, kasi rito, dale, for dun sa, dun po sa confirmed na, nawala from the, uh, Isabong venues, merong isang 14-year-old. na, nawala from the, uh, isabong venues, merong isang fourteen-year-old, if I'm not mistaken, so minor. Merong buntis.
Yes, Mr. President.
I don't know, but as, uh, uh, kung sa chairperson natin on the committee, 'yung women, if, uh, we should count that unborn child as alive, so we are actually not, not thirty-two, we're talking about thirty-three lives here, not thirty-two, kasi buntis eh? May buntis? Well, uh, 'yun lang po ako, dun lang, uh, Mr. Chairman, dun lang po ako umasa talaga na nung nadinig ko, pinagsanib natin ang pwesan ang, ano, but, uh, this is the, this is the best that we can do and I hope they assign their best people, solve, crack this. Do you agree with me, Mr. President, that there is no perfect crime?
Uh, this, uh...
Okay, there may be, there may be. But can there be, can there be six perfect crimes? Kasi ma-minus ko na, eight minus two, una solve na, can there be six perfect crimes?
That's impossible, Mr. President. That's impossible.
Yeah, so I, there must be a report or reports forthcoming from this pinagsanib na pwesaw of the best investigators of the Republic of the Philippines. Impossibling, they cannot crack the six crimes and they say because there's a perfect crime? Impossible?
Yeah.
Impossible?
I agree, I agree with you, sir, Mr. President.
So, how long is the patience of our chairman of the committee? Uh, how many, how many weeks or months are you giving our best investigators, uh, Mr. President, to come up with initial findings or initial, partial, or final findings, uh, Mr. President?
Until the nineteenth Congress, Mr. President.
Oh, that's a three-year term, uh, Mr. President?
No, no, uh, the, the, the opening of the third, uh, of the nineteenth Congress.
So July, July, August, so I, I, I really hope na, ano, kasi, I mean, uh, well, twelve, thirty-four people missing for how long na? Ilan buwan na? So, imposibling, imposibling kinidnap yun para pakainin araw-araw eh? I mean, so, medyo buha, buhay na po itong, uh, uh... Shall we consider them, uh, as, uh, uh, dead, uh, right now? So are we thirty-four dead persons?
Uh, legally, I, I, I don't...
No, no, not legally speaking, but...
Legally speaking, no.
No, but as from, uh, from a, uh, former police chief's point of view, I mean, thirty-four people missing for six months, um, mala...
Missing, but presume dead, Mr. President?
Most likely, most likely dead.
But we cannot legally declare them as a dead?
Not legally declared, but you know, all, all the more making, uh, these events, uh, heinous, heinous events, despicable events, uh, Mr. President. So thank you, thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations to the chairman and the committee for a very well-written, easy-to-follow, easy-to-understand report with very clear recommendations. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator, uh, uh, Brilon, the minority leader is recognized.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, and, uh, will the gentleman yield a few questions?
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. President, for the record, let me register my commend- commendation for the gentleman for exerting every effort to unearth this, uh, very, uh, if we want to use the very descriptive word, karumal dumal, nakrimen, saating paligid. And it is because of the investigation, uh, initiated by the, uh, good sponsor that the president was forced to suspend the isabong, which has started to, to manifest its ill effects on our society. And, uh, to start with, uh, and this is, uh, to start with, we now have in the, uh, spreading to the record that there are thirty-four missing as a consequence of this, uh, isabong. Do the gentleman agree that this is, this deserves the strongest condemnation from this chamber?
Yes, Mr. President. I could not agree more.
We are not aware of, uh, in the recent past, of an activity which has caused so much pain to thirty-four fam- families, uh, as in this case. Would the gentleman agree with us?
Yes, Mr. President, I agree.
And I heard the good gentleman saying that the, given the length of time that these thirty-four individuals are, uh, have, uh, been missing, it is reasonable and safe to assume that they are dead?
Yes, Mr. President.
Uh, it is a pure speculation, but would the gentleman, given the fact that he was, that he is, uh, an expert on, 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 on security, uh, venture against what is the cause of the deaths of these, uh, thirty-four individuals involved in isabong? Just a theoretical, you know, on every case, as the good, uh, gentleman, former chief PNP would affirm, you have always a theory when you are confronted with a, uh, with a crime. Would, would, if, if the good gentleman was still chief of the PNP, what would be his theory, given the circumstances that he knows?
Well, Mr. President, I, I can just only imagine very grim, uh, situation, Mr. President, as far as, uh, the circumstances behind the death, the possible death of these, uh, thirty-four missing persons, Mr. President. They are, of course, I assume, were executed, Mr. President.
They were executed? And for reasons related to isabong?
Just because of, uh, game fixing, Mr. President?
Okay. Indeed, uh, game, with that statement, uh, it strengthens my resolve that the resolution should be amended in order to, uh, you know, provide for the strongest condemnation. Uh, okay, so game fixing is a possibility, uh, insofar as cause is concerned? Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir, we cannot find any other, uh, motive for the death, Mr. President, or for their, for their, uh, being abducted, Mr. President. That's the only motive that, uh, we saw.
And game fixing, Mr. President, would mean that the, uh, uh, the, the betting is manipulated so that the winner would, uh, uh, amass or would win the bet, uh, uh, in manners that are not consistent with fair play? Is that correct, sir?
Yes, Mr. President.
Eh, in, in this particular case, lives have been taken, we assume. What do you think, why do you think, uh, uh, it has happened? Is it because of the volume of the bets that are involved and the money is involved?
Yes, Mr. President, because, uh, to start with, money is evil. Money is the root cause of all evil, Mr. President.
Money is the root, I agree with the good gentleman, money is the root cause of all evil, especially the monies that are rooted to be involved in isabong.
Easy money, Mr. President, easy money.
Okay. Uh, the good gentleman mentioned that there is income on the part of the government and no amount of income would justify the loss of even a single life. And I agree with that gentleman, with the, the position of gentleman. But having said that, uh, through the gentleman's knowledge, how much does the government, Pagcor particularly, make out of this licensing of the isabong?
Uh, Mr. President, according to Pagcor, they are, the government is earning, uh... Oh, or the, the Pagcor, uh, the government through Pagcor, uh, received four billion three hundred fifty million, three hundred fifty-one thousand as regulatory fees from their licensed isabong operators. Mr. President, uh, uh, for the past two years.
For the, so four point three, just to round it up, four point three billion in regulatory fees in the past two years?
Two years, yes, Mr. President.
Roughly, uh, uh, two point one billion per year?
Yes, Mr. President.
Two point one billion per year. I have attend, I attended one of the hearings and I asked the operator, uh, who was present, how much is the gross bet on isabong on a daily basis? Do you confirm that this response was anywhere from one billion to two billion a day in bets?
Yes, Mr. President, it's confirmed.
One to two billion pesos in bets a day?
Yes, Mr. President.
Now, assume, just assume, that we get the middle figure, one to two billion. We say one point five billion, uh, uh, you, uh, as, as a reasonable, uh, speculate, as a reasonable, uh, computation, because it's one to two billion per day, uh, and we just say, okay, let's say there is a bit of exaggeration, but maybe one and a half billion would be a reasonable assumption on the amount of bets per day?
That, that is only, Mr. President, according to one source. Only Lucky Eight Star Quest is claiming to, uh, to have, uh, computed that around one to two billion per day, uh, money is involved in the betting. But how about the other, uh, six, uh, six other companies involved in isabong? It is, uh, Lucky, Lucky, Lucky Eight Star Quest is only one of the eight, uh, licensing, Mr. President?
So in the, in the opinion of the good sponsor, how much would be, uh, a reasonable assumption on the volume of bets per day on isabong?
Well, it's safe to assume roughly two billion, Mr. President.
Two billion?
Yes, Mr. President, because, uh, Lucky Star Quest is, uh, uh, is dominating the isabong industry. So maybe barya-barya na lang 'yung nandun sa, uh, seven other, uh, uh, operators, Mr. President, but still, uh, it's safe to assume that, uh, aabot pa rin ng more than two billion daily, because, uh, one to two billion was the, uh, conservative estimate of, uh, Mr. Atong Ang per his, uh, if, per his company is concerned.
Yes. Well, sir, at two billion a day, if there are three hundred sixty-five days in a year and this, uh, betting takes place twenty-three hours in a day, how much would be the reasonable gross bets annually? Is it one hundred and fifty-three billion? Is that what it is?
Uh, the total, per Pagcor's record, Mr. President, the data submitted to this committee, the total base from all operators from date of their operation until February twenty-twenty-two is at seven hundred forty-two billion, seven hundred sixty-five million, three hundred six thousand pesos, Mr. President.
What is that, sir? The gross bets estimate?
Total bets. Yeah, yeah, the gross, yeah, total.
Yeah, the gross bets, total bets?
Yes, sir.
Assume that fifty percent is, uh, uh, the overhead expenses, uh, which is already a little high, but you just assume a fifty percent, or you're talking about? How much? Oh, uh, okay. My ex, our expert, our resident expert on this says, is it, it is at five percent of seven four hundred forty-two billion is what, is what the, uh, isabong operator would make? Uh, that's, uh, at, at five percent, is that thirty, what? Thirty-two, thirty-five billion or, uh, mind boggling? Can, can the gentleman help us here? If it's five percent of the total gross base, bets of seven hundred forty-two, that would be roughly, uh, uh, huh? Thirty, thirty-seven billion?
Billion.
Per ano?
Yes, Mr. President.
Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
As the net income of the, as the income of the operator?
Yes, Mr. President.
I think San Miguel is in the wrong business, the Alas in the wrong business, uh, uh, the Ts are in the wrong business. You're talking here about, uh, three, how many billion?
Thirty-seven billion.
A year? Thirty-seven billion a year? Tell me, Mr. President, who is the company in the Philippines making thirty-seven billion a year? Uh, after, after, uh, taxes? And, and the thirty-seven billion is a very conservative estimate, uh, if I may say, because we're just talking about five percent. So that is why, the reason why I'm asking all of these questions is because the four points, the, the two point, how much, two point, uh, uh, two billion per year is pitance compared to the thirty-seven billion, uh, income earned by the operator. We're saying that the government is earning, uh, from this, uh, or activity, but the government take, uh, the government tax, the government fees, if you look at the gross, uh, income of the operators, is not even ten percent of what they earn?
Yes, Mr. President. Pitance, the term used by, uh, Senator Richto.
So, so indeed, given the magnitudes of what we're talking about here, I concur with the good gentleman in saying that this, uh, incidence of kidnappings, uh, and, uh, assumption of, uh, death, uh, is all, all rooted in all, in this, uh, very lucrative business which can cost the life of people if they intervene in this, uh, issue?
Yes, Mr. President, because, uh, I, I, I think, uh, if you have all the money, maybe you begin, you begin to think that, uh, you are in, uh, what's the right thing, Mr. President? You're indestructible, you're untouchable, or, uh, you can, you can, uh, you can, uh, influence, uh, everything through your money? If you have all the money, Mr. President?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, and, uh, uh, we, we will no longer, uh, consume the time of this chamber in questions like the, or, in asking the questions. Uh, we just want to, to be assured, uh, by the good gentleman that, uh, the, uh, that the, uh, report will be amended to incorporate this, uh, the statements and admissions that were made here today, uh, uh, and particularly, uh, condemning in the strongest possible terms.
Yes, Mr. President.
The, the, you know, the, uh, uh, in the, uh, events that have taken place on this matter. With that, we, uh, we, we have no longer any question and, uh, with the assurance of the good gentleman that this, uh, issues that were raised will be reflected in the final report.
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hi, Senator Brilon, eh ba?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as, uh, stated yesterday, that this representation is very much, uh, interested to, uh, ask some clarificatory questions. As, uh, stated yesterday also, that this representation is, uh, indeed very supportive of the, uh, committee report made by our distinguished colleague, our esteemed colleague, the gentleman from, uh, Davao, and, uh, we, uh, continue to commend and, uh, uh, thank him for, uh, for his, uh, for his, uh, uh, hard work, especially in this, uh, very, uh, I would say controversial, uh, issue, Mr. President, hounding our country today. Mr. President, at the onset, let me state for the record, as I was listening a while ago to the, uh, uh, questions being raised by our dear minority floor leader, when, when the chairperson said that money is evil, in fact, uh, let me state for the record, my, my personal opinion is that money is good per se, but the love for money is the root of all evils. That's also in the Bible, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I couldn't, uh, uh, figure out what exact, uh, verse in the Bible. Uh, nakalaga yun, no, Mr. President? But, uh, let me, uh, 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 dwell, Mr. President, no longer on the side of, uh, the missing individuals that, uh, Senator Coco Pimentel raised a while ago. Let me just, uh, uh, talk about, uh, the Pagcor's charter, Mr. President. The gentleman from Davao, as, uh, he reported yesterday that, uh, that, uh, there is a, a provision in the, uh, committee report that talks about the charter of Pagcor. One, uh, may we know, Mr. President, if right now we have decided among ourselves the real charter of Pagcor, because during the hearing, if the gentleman from Davao would recall, this... this representation raised that particular issue on whether or not PAGCORE is really our state regulator or, and/or, um, state operator, no, in gambling, uh, Mr. President? I think that's, that's, that's very important. And number two, Mr. President, we'd like to find out if, uh, because during the hearing, this representation also raised that issue, Mr. President, uh, what particular provision of the PAGCORE charter, uh, would, would carry this, uh, giving away of licenses to isabong operators? So, that, to issue, Mr. President, that I'd like to raise and, uh, if it is there in the, uh, committee report, uh, in, in this representation, uh, would like to know, Mr. President, if it's, uh, clearly stated in the committee report? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, they are incorporated in our, uh, uh, committee report. Number four, uh, it says that PAGCORE has no clear legal mandate to regulate isabong. Because their basis, uh, Mr. President, was, uh, the legal opinion from DOJ and, uh, from the Executive Secretary, Office of Executive Secretary. It was not, uh, uh, really state, clearly stated in their charter, Mr. President, that, uh, they can regulate isabong.
So, that's it, Mr. President. We all agree, the, uh, I, I remember during the time, no less than the Senate President himself, uh, uh, proposed the, uh, resolution to actually call for the suspension of the operations of isabong. So again, no clear mandate, uh, Mr. President, and therefore, uh, uh, in order for this isabong to, uh, to, uh, uh, reemerge, Mr. President, they would have to convince us again that they, they have the mandate to, uh, to, uh, give licenses to isabong operators. Is that correct, Your Honor?
Yes, uh...
Thank you.
Yes, yes, uh, Mr. President.
Um, Mr. President, uh, may I also ask, uh, for the record, Mr. President, the, uh, issue on the money transfer, Mr. President? I'm so concerned about this because, uh, this representation is also the national chairman of Christianong Kabataan Para Sa Bayan Movement. And, uh, we have been getting a lot of complaints, not only from our youth leaders, but even from, uh, parents, Mr. President, as also showed, shown during the, uh, uh, the committee hearings, Mr. President, that minors, young people, Mr. President, at the early age of their life would be, uh, uh, addicted to, uh, isabong, Mr. President. And so, we'd like to ask, Mr. President, um, how are we protecting now the, the, the young people of our nation into this, uh, uh, scheme, Mr. President, of, uh, uh, money transferring or betting, Mr. President? As made mention yesterday, Mr. President, uh, there are some apps, for example, the Gcash and PayMaya, wherein, Mr. President, nung binigyan natin sila ng, uh, uh, franchise dito sa Senado, hindi naman kasama dun sa franchise, that, ha, they can actually, uh, run apps like this, na, na pupwedeng tumaya, Mr. President? I remember during the hearing, Mr. President, this representation actually tried to register. And the chairperson, Senator Bato and Senator Ping Laxon, even teased me why I was able to, uh, get in, Mr. President, because after five minutes, I was able to get in so easily, Mr. President. So, I wonder what is now the, uh, the, the status? Uh, we have heard about the, uh, statements made by the Banco Central ng Pilipinas, that they are suspending this, uh, uh, particular apps, Mr. President? Perhaps we could, uh, hear more from the distinguished gentleman, uh, the chairperson of the Senate Committee on Public Order? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, it is true that Banco Central, uh, uh, orders the removal of isabong from apps of, uh, supervised entities. So, tinanggal na po yan, Mr. President. And, uh, dito naman sa aming, uh, sa ating, uh, committee report, the, our recommend, recommendation is that, uh, for money transfer facilities to ensure that minors will not be able to use their facilities for gambling purposes, recommend the strict implementation of know-your-customer policy, not only during registration stage, but as well as usage and management of account. So, yan po recommendation natin, Mr. President. But, uh, I think it would be immaterial, uh, again, because, uh, Banco Central has already, uh, uh, removed isabong from, uh, uh, apps of their supervised entities.
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you, Mr. President. But, uh, let me again state for the record that during the hearing, this representation stated that it's so easy not to comply with the requirements of these apps. I remember, uh, raising this particular issue. For example, if I am a government official and the, the question, or there was no question at all asking whether or not I'm a government official or if I am a minor and I can easily, uh, join in the, in the, uh, bet, Mr. President? So, Mr. President, what steps are being undertaken or will be undertaken by money transfer facilities to improve their know-your-customer procedures, Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, we leave it up to, to the, to the money transfer facility, uh, uh, money transfer facilities to make sure that, uh, the know-your, know-your customer will be, uh, implemented properly, Mr. President. And, uh, before, uh, i- i- if isabong will be, uh, reincarnated in the next, uh, administration, then we will make sure that, uh, this, uh, policy recommendation in our committee report must be observed, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, for that answer. And I'm also raising this particular issue, not only for, for, for isabong purposes, Mr. President, because we are all aware about digitalization, about, uh, the casinos left and right here in the country, where they can also use these apps, Mr. President. And so, this know-your-customer procedures, as stated during the hearing, when this representation, uh, uh, asked, uh, questions from the, from the representative of PAGCORE, they were saying that they would develop something. But still, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in a, in a, uh, state of confusion, Mr. President, as to how they're going to implement it. For instance, Mr. President, if, if it is an app and I say I am not a minor anymore, how would they know? If it is an app that says I am not a government, uh, employee, how would they know? Uh, still, Mr. President, this is, uh, uh, mind-boggling as to how really they would, uh, protect our people, especially our minors, as, as we have seen during the hearing, Mr. President? There are some minors, I, if I'm not mistaken, from Davao, uh, region, where a fourteen-year-old or sixteen-year-old actually got addicted to isabong and all of a sudden, ang dami 'yung utang bigla.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, I hope that they will develop, uh, an app that, uh, can really, uh, execute our, uh, our requirement, Mr. President, about the know-your-customer, not only during the application, but, uh, and registration, but during the usage, Mr. President? So, how they will do it, uh, maybe we'll conduct another, uh, committee hearing, uh, if that, uh, will happen, Mr. President?
Uh, another thing, Mr. President, is, uh, if you, if the gentleman from Davao would recall when this representation raised during the hearing, the player exclusion ban? Because, uh, right now, Mr. President, if a certain member of the family is addicted to, to gambling, for instance, and a member of the family would go to casinos, including, uh, uh, cock, cockfighting arenas, Mr. President? Nireklamo kunyari nung, uh, isang mahal sa buhay nung pamilya at sabihin, addicted siya. In fact, iba ban siya, hindi siya papapasukin dun sa, uh, cockfighting arena, uh, doon sa mga casinos, hindi sila pinapapasok, Mr. President? But then, ito nga ho, nung pumasok na itong mga digital, uh, uh, online, uh, apps, where they can actually bet, Mr. President, is there something that, uh, we are doing or the committee report is, uh, saying with regard to a player exclusion ban, Mr. President?
Well, uh, Mr. President, as far as our committee report is concerned, uh, uh, it was not mentioned, uh, Mr. President. But I hope, uh, we will, uh, ask the expertise of the ICITY to help us in this regard, Mr. President.
In fact, Mr. President, this representation would be more than willing to, uh, to, uh, work hand in hand with our distinguished colleague. Um, uh, I think I was able to, uh, raise this, uh, uh, extensively during the hearing because, uh, uh, in casinos and in, uh, uh, ano yun, 'yung live sabong, Mr. President? Nagagawa ito, so kung, uh, nagagawa ito, so dapat meron din silang idea on how to do this, no? Uh, na maaddress itong, uh, problema na ito. Mr. President, I, I, I don't have, uh, any other, uh, matter that I would like to, uh, raise except for the fact that, uh, in our, uh, hometown, Mr. President, in Bulakan, um, uh, this is a, a, a tragic story that I'd like to share to the body, na may isahong pamilya sa amin, na nalulun ng, uh, isabong at, uh, sinanla 'yung kanyang ari-arian, sinanla 'yung mga kayamanan po nila. And, uh, until one day, Mr. President, hindi niya maharap 'yung pamilya niya, 'yung mahal niya sa buhay, siya na mismo, Mr. President, ang, uh, kumitil ng kanyang buhay. And so, this is, this is not actually, uh, uh, a joke, Mr. President. And I think it's a very serious matter that we need to look into. The, uh, polos, Mr. President, of our embassies made a statement before na this is a grave concern, itong lumala lang, uh, isabong. And, uh, I hope we, we, we really do something about it because the social cost, Mr. President, as, uh, made mention by our distinguished sponsor in his, uh, 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 speech in, uh, the committee report, Mr. President, I'd like to associate myself to, uh, that statement made by our distinguished colleague. I hope that, uh, uh, we look into this and, uh, hopefully, Mr. President, uh, sa, sa lahat ng pagkakataon, isaalang-alang natin 'yung kinabukasan ng ating mga kabataan. Maraming salamat, ginawang pangulo. Thank you very much, uh, esteemed colleague, Senator Bato. Thank you.
General Leader. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Without no other person wishes to interpret, the gentleman from Davao, the sure move that we adopt committee report number... Is there any amendment, Mr. President? No amendments? Therefore, move to adopt committee report number six-four-six. Any objection? Hearing none. Committee report six-four-six hereby adopted. Okay. We may proceed, Mr. President, with our... Ah.
Thank you.
Senator Coco, alala? May I ask for one minute's suspension? Can we have a few minutes of suspension so we can prepare for the... All right. Session suspended. Paring script na talaga. So, skis ko mo na, de Certo Ralphs. Zano. Ayaw na. Haluwa. So I will recognize you after you, Senator Ralph. And then...
Apo hindi na?
And then you give Senator Frank then the resolution, huh? So unahin na muna namin 'yan. Then back to peace.
...
Maganda 'yung kuha di.
Ready to reshoot, Mr. President?
Session is reshoot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, with the indulgence of our colleagues, we're going to reverse the flow. We will... The scenario, we will take up first the speeches of our dear colleagues, officers of this chamber, starting with our dear Senate President, the Senate President Pro Temp, as well as this representation and the minority floor leader. Then we will act on the resolutions, Mr. President, so that we have a chance to allow the people to hear the speeches of our dear colleagues at an earlier hour rather than a later hour. With that, Mr. President, I would like to recognize the distinguished Senate President of the Seventeenth and Eighteenth Congress, no other than Senator Vicente Soto III. Thank you very much.
The Senate President Vicente Soto III is recognized. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Your Honors. Thank you. Still majority leader. Thank you very much. Mr. President, I praise and thank the Lord, our God, for the many graces he has given us all these years. I praise and thank him for the mission and path that he has led me to undertake from the time I became Vice Mayor of Quezon City up to being elected Senator of the Republic. And I am particularly grateful to the Lord for the distinguished ladies and gentlemen that I have had the privilege to associate myself and work with from 1988 up to the present. That includes you, the Eighteenth Congress. Each of them, each of you, has positively contributed to my tremendously worthwhile journey called public service. Today, June 1st, 2022, masquerades like any other day, though its component units are made up of the same number of minutes and hours. The reality is very different, however. Sinidee is a Latin term which literally translates to "without day." This refers to the legislative practice of stopping the clock a little bit before midnight so as to create the legal fiction that all transactions were done or were done with within the regulatory period and not a minute later, which would make them void. The primary thoughts occupying my mind are those of lawmaking and leaving. Two ideas that intersect at this very moment. Each institution, family and person, have a story to tell. They all have beginnings and endings and in-betweens. Our Senate, as the other half of the Congress of the Philippines, began to exist in 1916, such that not so many years ago, we celebrated our centenary. Oh, by the way, there was only one family name that existed in the 1916 Senate and the 2016 Senate. Soto. My grand uncle, Filimon Soto, in 1916 and yours truly, fortunately, Vicente Soto, in 2016. The first Senate President was the late, great President of the Commonwealth, Manuel Luis Quezon, who so dominated the political era and is today remembered as a province and a city that his memory never fades from our people's consciousness. He was followed by more than 20 others whose names evoke memories of political astuteness, brilliance of mind and urbanity of behavior. I do not claim nor aspire for the same accolades. It is enough for me to have been your friend these many years. A builder of consensus if arguments stand in the way. A harmonizer should there be discordant notes. I had the rare chance of having been mentored by the Senate Presidents who served before me. That includes Frank and Coco. On the aspect of lawmaking, to be precise, we have passed laws that offered relief to ease the effects of COVID-19 on Filipinos. Throughout the critical days of graded lockdown, your Senate was able to enact the annual budget on time. During this pandemic, hospital occupancy literally spilled into driveways and parking lots. It seemed like the dark hours would never end. Fortunately, we are mostly over the hump thanks to the government's vigorous vaccination campaign as mandated by the COVID-19 Vaccination Program of 2021. Our public health recovery can also be traced to the heroic efforts of all medical frontliners. They stayed the course despite the apparent danger to their health. We are also thankful for the cooperation of the enlightened citizenry. Despite experiencing initial difficulties, they trusted their government. More so, they complied as best they can with quarantine and medical protocols. Together with our people, we mourn and honor the memory of those we have lost. And as a nation, we look forward to the challenge of the future. The closing of the Senate sessions today looks towards that future. We are continually learning to live with the COVID virus and finding ways to respond to our people's need through legislation. We're hopeful that the Senate's work will, in time, contribute to regaining the nation's spiritual vigor, political durability and economic stability. As we count down the last hours of the Eighteenth Congress, permit me to submit and encapsulate the gains of the third regular session together with the loss that yours truly has principally authored and sponsored all the way through the Ninth Congress as an annex to this valentineary address. On the matter of leaving, we Filipinos turn sentimental. Rizal wrote a long poem as he contemplated his execution. Our OFWs have tear-jerking scenes that rival movies in heartrending last-minute tears and hugs. We hear our, shall we say, less prone to these expressions, but the sweet sorrow of party is real. We have come to love the Senate, its members, the secretariat and the plain serenity of being at its premises. It will always have a special place in my heart. Our dear Filipinos, it is with the fervent hope that the laws passed under the Eighteenth Congress will make a difference in the lives of our fellow Filipinos. As the Eighteenth Congress comes to a close, so shall my term as Senator. I look back on the day in 1992 when I was first elected into office. I remember entering the old Senate building, which is now a national museum, as a neophyte senator. I have been in public service for decades already. My journey, my journey has been long and arduous, but it had its shining moments. My years at the Senate, as Senate President and as a regular senator are the highlights of my career as a public servant. I can and I will show off my legislative accomplishments not only to my grandkids, but to the younger generations. Proud and guilt-free that I have not abused my position to enrich myself or any member of my family. I have kept my credibility intact and my name unsolid. In my years in the Senate, Mr. President, I had the good fortune of learning from the best minds in the country. In turn, I turned... I earned... I earned the respect of my colleagues and I became, as you may recall, the Minority Leader, eventually Majority Leader. Today, it is with a sense of gratitude that I closed the Eighteenth Congress as Senate President, a distinction given to me by you, my dear esteemed colleagues. I hope I have not been a disappointment. As everyone knows, I was first a musician before being a politician. For this reason, some sectors might have misjudged my capacity as a public servant. But what I learned in my 24 years in the Senate is that an artist and a politician are not very different from each other. Permit me to tell you why. Like a musician, the politician must first have a dream and in that dream, he must create music that will inspire people to sing. Second, a musician like the politician must have a sense of rhythm. Both of them must be able to discern the tempo of the times. Both must know the pulse of the people. And finally, both the musician and the politician must understand that their work becomes meaningful only when it redounds to the common good. I understand that music or legislation must not only be for the few, it must benefit all. I share the honor of my work in the Senate to all senators who have preceded us as much as now. Bow in respect to all the senators of the Eighteenth Congress. To my colleagues who have supported me from the beginning, I thank you. I shall treasure your friendship and commitment of cooperation. I extol the hard work that you have put into your individual committees. I will forever admire your integrity and nationalism. I am also indebted to each one of you and to all the officers and employees of the Senate Secretariat, the Senate Secretariat, headed by Attorney Mayra Marie Villarica, who made sure that the legislative wheels kept turning. To the journalists covering the Senate, I give you my thanks. As members of the press, you have a vital role in maintaining transparency and accountability in government. As our bridge to and from the public, your work is always appreciated. I am and will always be grateful to the millions of Filipinos who have given me their trust and confidence. Salamat sa tiwala at kompansa. Today, as I stand before my colleagues and the Filipino people on my last day as Senate President, I have one final and earnest appeal to the incoming Nineteenth Congress. Maintain the integrity and the independence of the Senate. Huwag na inyong payagan na mabahiran ang politika ang inyong serbisyo sa taong bayan. Ingatan niyo ang respetong ibinigay ng bawat Pilipino sa senado at sa mga miyembro nito. When the time comes that my humble name will have to be ensconced and chiselled into the annals of the Senate's history, I want to be remembered as Vicente Soto III, a musician by profession, a sportsman by affiliation, a drug buster by vocation and a public servant by conviction. Salamat mabuhay.
Congratulations, Senate President Vicente Soto. Thank you for your service. Session suspended. Session is resumed.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, indeed, and allow me to put this on record. You are probably one of the best Senate Presidents that I've experienced in my lifetime working in public service, Mr. President. I'm honored to have served as your Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, sir. Thank you kindly.
And I will give more accolades a little bit later.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. Next to give his speech as well is our distinguished honorable colleague from Batangas, no other than the hard-working economist, a expert on numbers, someone who can get a simple bill and add to... Add value to that bill to make sure that it is true to the times and... help the people, especially help our economy, no other than Senator Ralph Recto, our Senate President Pro Temp, sir.
The President Pro Temp of the Senate of the Republic of the Philippines, Senator Ralph Recto, gentleman from Batangas, is recognized.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Mr. President, my dear colleagues. Thirty years and thirty pounds ago, I walked into the House of Representatives as its youngest member. Next month, I will be returning there as one of the oldest in years, but certainly not in looks. From being the totoy of the House, as what Speaker JDV called me when I mounted the rostrum to swear him in, to Atito, as how I was addressed by some millennial congressman during the canvassing last week, is one great journey I have enjoyed. In all, I spent nine years in the bigger and better house, eighteen in this smaller but smarter house, and a year and a half as NEDO's highest-paid casual. But it is my work in this chamber, which I think made me a little bit wiser and certainly wider in girth. The first is courtesy of the smorgasbord of ideas that we tackle in plenary. The latter, the marienda spread in the lounge.
Dito kasi sa Senado, hindi lang ang mga matatayo na filosofya ng isambatas ang ating pinag-uusapan. Hinihime din natin ang mga particulars. Ika nga, the boldness of legislation is found in its fine print. Halimbawa na lang, kung sing taas ni Senator Xavier, ang budget materials taon-taon, you really have to study, to think before you talk? Hindi pwedeng ishortak sa TikTok.
My stay in public office has so far been bookended by crisis. Crisis is not the only constant in our national life. Crisis is our brand. I remember that I entered Congress when we were grappling with the devastation of Pinatubo, the Baguio earthquake, a parade of typhoons, an energy crisis, and the economic fallout of military adventurism thirty years ago. In many places, when you opened the taps, there was no water. You tried to catch a plane, there was none. You lift the phone, you get a busy signal. You switch on the lights, there was no power. But you know what? We were able to fix these problems simply because our capacity as a nation to make our lives better is greater than the things which make it bad. Over the last thirty-five years, we have cut poverty incidents, raised family incomes, created jobs, opened opportunities, slashed illiteracy, and improved life expectancy. This is not to deny that many people fell and continue to fall between the cracks and closing the wealth gap, installing safety nets, and building a scaffolding of growth for them to climb up on remain our unfinished task. That we were able to overcome all of the challenges gives me the hope that we too shall rise from the pandemic and when we do, the Senate will be acknowledged as being there in the front line, fighting the good fight. Katulad na lang nitong pandemia, na kung saan sinubok tayo, ano ang ginawa natin? While scientists crouched for a vaccine, we scrambled to roll out policies that will blunt its harm. So we passed the Bayanihan Laws, a medicine cabinet of responses whose potency was increased because the Senate, true to its tradition, improved what the administration wanted instead of merely ratifying it. And after Bayanihan, the Senate went to its usual grind, but with a greater sense of urgency. We work remotely and resolutely. During the budget season, we put in twelve-hour days via Zoom with the same zeal. The result is a wartime scorecard we can be truly proud of. I hope that in this distant future, when history will judge our acts during the time of peril, its verdict will be kind. History will tell future generations that when COVID ravished the country, twenty-four men and women rose to the challenge and brought hope to a people in despair. Dubating na po tayo sa punto na kailangan natin magpaalam. Pero pansamantalalang, ika nga, a farewell is necessary before you can meet again. Every hour spent here was a teachable moment to me. Every day, a blessing because it brought forth the chance to make a difference. Permit me, Mr. President, to make a last roll call. To Bong, your moonlighting days as a presidential aide is over. Relish your freedom, but never give up your bisyo na magserbisyo. To the other half of the DDS, or Davao dedicated senators, Senator Bato, I salute you for your ramrod straight integrity. Your laws are as good as chiseled in stone. Itagano sa Bato. Bon rebiliya. Thank you for birthing the permanent birth and NSO certificate bill and many other common sense bills that help the common folk. I shall repay your support by never squealing on you to your wife Lani, who will be my seatmate in the House. To Miggs, son of Bukidnon, Bacolod and Basque, a floor leader par excellence, who kept the conveyor belt of laws rotting because no one can beat you in finding compromise, diffusing tension, and building consensus. Laghang salamat. Hindi rin kita isusumbong sa tatay mo. To Mom Cynthia, from whom the country's richest man gets his weekly allowance. Your Goldilocks principle in making laws is the reason why they have become good ones. Ano ang Goldilocks principle? Remember the fable of the lugaw. To hot, Papa Bear complains. To cold, cries Baby Bear. Just right, says Mama Bear. Pag sinabi ni Mama Bear na tama na ang timpla, ihain na. To the two Bulakenios in the Senate, Win and Joel, your good stewards of this institution's tradition of hard work on the high road. As Energy Committee Chair, Win never ran out of lightbulb moments which have illuminated our path forward, especially in education and health. With the people returning him to the Senate, Joel will continue percolating good laws with the same expertise that he brews coffee. You're the man, test the man, to teach our youth life hacks and employable skills. To Sunny, the better Angara, I asked a genie to grant you three miracles. First, that the Celtics be champions. Second, the Sox win the World Series. Third, that you continue to perform the budget equivalent of the miracle of making wine out of water and bread for the multitude from a single loaf. Of the three, the last one is the easiest. Kay Senator Lapid, ang pinuno nating lahat. Tanda ko pa ang sinabi ni Senator Joker Arroyo. Annyeong, kung gusto mong malaman ang pulso ng masa, kunais mong alamin ang epekto ng isambatas sa mamamayan, hindi mo kailangan ng survey. Tanungin mo sila ito, wag si Lilo. Kasi mas alam niya ang pulso ng tao. To Francis, whose city earns billions from Batangas, expensive and explosive real estate tal volcano. Your research on bills are gems of scholarship. Because you have put in long hours in studying them, you cut the Senate's time spent in debating them. To Nancy, I'm a fan of your one-liners and self-deprecating humor. Your lacerating tweets break the ego of the rulers and the conscience of the rule, while giving us all a laugh. I grieve that VP Jojo, a great Batangueño, will not join you here. Coco, you are indeed your father's son. In recent days, you have become like him, one who does not seek comfort in numbers but draws strength from your convictions. Kay Amy, na manang ng bayan, I'm gonna bet that you will be an in-house critic who will speak truth to power, a one-person feedback machine, and a powerhouse styling atelier. For His Excellency's clothes and speech, Bong Bong has no better teacher in statecraft and stagecraft than Ate. I will also miss working with Risa, who merged poise and progressive causes in one charming package. She speaks softly but carries big policy sticks. Siya ang radical na madaling mahalin. Manny Pacquiao remains my idol on the ring, on the floor, and outside of it. Pound for pound, he is the country's longest philanthropy champion. He does not run away from debates, never backing down from interpositions in this bruising arena that we call the plenary. There is another athlete here who remains one of my favorite sparring partners of all time. So let me say this. You haven't passed the Senate's stress test if you have not survived multiple rounds of debates with Pia on what are essentially intellectual marathons. Another feisty lady, worthy of our respect, is Lila de Lima, a prisoner of conscience punished for her courage, but whose spirit no prison walls could contain. Throes put her behind bars, the truth shall set her free. Mr. President-elect, free Lila. To Kiko, what you have sown will bear fruit and you will be there to witness the people enjoying the rich harvest. As your fellow Harvard alumnus once said, "The work goes on, the cause endures, the hope still lives, and the dream shall never die." With Ping going full-time on apostolic duties, the public lost a watchman who shines a powerful lantern on the national budget. Or how taxes paid in cash are returned to the public in kind. He leaves behind big shoes to fill, shoes he also used to kick the behind of those who betray the public trust. To Senator Grace, thank you for your patience and understanding. Sabi mo, etong si Ralph hindi maabusa ng amendments. Ulitin ko muli ang sinabi ko ng isang araw kasi it is worth repeating. He once poignantly said, "I firmly believe that adopting one child may not change the world, but it will certainly change the world for that child." No, Grace, let me amend your statement for the last time. Your mom's courageous and compassionate act fifty-four summers ago did change our world because that child continues to make our world better. Tulad din niyo, nalulungkot ako na hindi nakapasok si Dick. The country's oldest and first responder. The most iconic thought of Dick in action when his trademark courage and compassion were on full display was during the Pinatubo eruption. Here was a man running towards the most powerful volcanic eruption in history when people were running away from it. His CV of helping spans from Yoling to Yolanda. At ungodly hours, you would find him in the estribo of a fire truck. Natutulog yata siya while a fire alarm, with a fire alarm by his bedside. We have to ask lovely Kate for that. The last two senators I would like to honor are the third and fourth senators after Lorenzo Tanyada Senior and Ed Angara. To have completed four terms in the post-war Senate, a rare feat of almost a quarter of a century of service. The third would be Espitito because he joined the Senate in 1992. And Frank was in batch ninety-five. If the Senate were an orchestra, Tito is the conductor, creating out of many sounds one great musical piece by many divas, if I may add. The truth is, he is better at writing laws than writing songs, better in putting ideas into policies than words into music. He might have built an impressive catalog of songs, but this does not compare to his greatest hits in lawmaking. He helps the Senate the way he drives his car, hands-on. If you use self-driven on him, that word takes a new meaning. He is no member of the chauffeur class. Tito has an ear for music and his willingness to listen more than to speak. He had applied in composing lost tunes, which is what makes him a great SP. The next inducted to the group of twenty-four of twenty-four years in the Senate is Senator Frank. Frank, closing his eyes in deep thought, has inspired a catalog of memes which would have made him a billionaire if he could monetize it. Not that he had dozed off in the Senate, but this I will state with certainty. A sleeping drilon will have more activity in his brain than many of us awake. He can even be packed full of sedatives, but will still retain computing power to outsmart the fully conscious among us. Like Tito, I admire his stamina and mental acuity. Write no recrimination for this political heavyweight. This is just a break for him. The big man will be back. Mr. President, my dear colleagues, in this age when our performances are gauged by shares and likes, the temptation is high to trade what is right over what is popular. When that beckons, let us remember the heritage which makes this institution a bulwark of democracy and independence. Through the years, this has been our role. We don't countenance abuse, we counter it. We don't diminish our sovereignty, we defend it. We don't top tax proposals, we temper them. We believe that those of less in life must have more in government help. We don't choke free trade, we champion it. We affirm that progress should not always be at the expense of rights. We believe that in creating wealth, mandates must come with merit. We believe that investing in our people's yields, the highest returns. We believe that in building a kinder and gentler society, we must appeal to our people's basic decency and not to their worst fears. These are the burdens we carry, a legacy we must sustain. Sa mga empleado ng Senado, secretariat, contractual employees, service contractors, maraming salamat sa pag-aruga sa inyong supporta. To my Senate staff, I could not have done it without you. I credit the good I have done to your help, while my missteps are mine alone. Sa akin, mga kasamaan, maraming maraming salamat po. See you all in Baikam. Fifteen years ago, I ended my temporary goodbye speech in this chamber with this message to the love of my life. Honey, I'm home. This time, let me end it with my text to her. Honey, I'm going to your house. Marami salamat, giron, pagulo. Marami salamat, Giron, Paul.
Session suspended. Session resumed. General Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'd like to thank our Senate President Pro Temp for that wonderful speech where he, he acknowledged all of our colleagues. And let me just say this, Mr. President, it's not farewell for the good Senate President Pro Temp. It's still, we see you again and we will make sure we will warm a seat for you, sir. Yeah, Mr. President, next to give his speech is our distinguished, another distinguished Minority Floor Leader and another one of our best Senate Presidents, being that he was elected three times to the Senate, one of the few that was elected three times to the Senate.
The only one.
The only one, if I'm not mistaken. Mr. President, may we recognize the distinguished big man of the Senate, Senator Franklin M. Drilon.
The Minority Leader, the only Senate President elected twice. Senator Frank Drilon is recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President,